Welcome everyone back to the first meeting of 2013 for the Planning Commission. I hope everyone had a good holiday. All members are present, so we have established quorum. Do need to administer an oath to any public participants, participants that is, who plan on speaking today. All you have to do is say "I do" after I administer the oath. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission?
I do.
Thank you. Disposition of the last meeting minutes, they are attached to the back of your agenda. They were from the meeting on December the 6th.
I move we accept the minutes of December 6th.
I'll second that motion. Comments, questions? And all those in favor, say "I."
Aye.
Alright. We have one case on our agenda for 2013 so far. It is East State Street, case number 1301, East State Street, it's former Columbia Gas property. It is a zoning designation for a proposed annexation. If Mr. Paskey or Mr. Loeb would provide a brief summary, I'd appreciate it.
Just real quickly, the, um, this piece of real estate has been in process on some level of being annexed into applying for an annexation to the city for several years now. I believe the applicants, like Nolan and Adam Baker, they have probably spoken before this commission before, but if not, they have met with me on countless occasions about this, they've met with city council about it, et cetera. The piece of real estate in question, most people typically would describe it or call it the old Columbia Gas site. We like to refer to things by what they used to be, not by what they are, in Athens. So this was the site for Columbia Gas's main regional office, I believe, for years. It is owned by an organization called Hemske, which is a collection of partners in a limited liability corporation. It's about 12.6 acres. It is surrounded by real estate on the north, east, and west, that is within the limits of the city of Athens. The real estate on either side is zoned M Industrial, and the real estate to the north appears to be zoned at P3, looking at that map there.
Right.
There's portions of the land that are in the flood plain, there's portions that have been elevated out from where the original Columbia Gas site was. I don't know what else I can summarize on it.
I think that, I know this is, I don't know if this property owner spoke to the commission before, not that I remember. I know you've spoken a couple times about-
Maybe, yeah.
-the possibility of this being annexed, because it's, if you look at the zoning map, it does sort of appear like a missing tooth in where, what is considered part of the city of Athens and what's Athens County. That's in the county's jurisdiction and township, correct? Right now?
It's Kanan Township.
Kanan, okay.
Yes, yeah.
A couple of questions. First question, if we called by this pass, what would you call it now? Prairie land or something, rather than Columbia Gas?
What would I qualify as? Vacant land?
Vacant land, okay. The other question I have is, if I look at the map, I see there's a section between the river, I guess the highway and the river, and the property itself. Is that Conservancy District stuff, or is it ODOT? Do you know offhand?
To the south?
Yes.
Offhand, I'm not sure, Mayor.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, to the immediate south is ODOT.
Is it ODOT? Okay, I just wondered.
Yeah, it is, I mean, part of that parcel for sure, the highway goes through.
Right, okay. Just wondered where the pieces were. Okay, that's all I have. Do you have a recommendation?
I don't offhand. It appears to me that M Industrial is reasonable based on the surrounding uses and what's to the either side. We have very little available space for M Industrial in our city. It's a ripe site, it's a large location, so.
Do you, when you said it's elevated, how much of it is elevated? Do you know offhand?
Offhand, roughly the pad for where Columbia Gas was located. So it's a pretty large chunk of that. Several acres of it is already elevated out.
Third of the site, if I sound that wrong?
About right, yeah.
I'd say forty percent probably.
Okay.
Although it's-
Alright. Yeah, I mean, I know in the past, we've usually looked very closely at what was the adjacent zoning designation when we had an annexation request. M1 is one of the more very open of the zoning regulations, you know, you can do pretty much anything that's permitted, and the city of Athens is permitted in the M1 for the-
With the exception of residential.
Alright. Any other comments, questions from commission members at this point?
Do you need a motion to propose as-
Could you just ask a quick question?
Yes, okay.
If, for instance, that building was ever torn down, would it need to-
It is torn down.
The Columbia Gas is just a pad. Would they need to-
Any remediation or anything?
Any flood plane as far as like fill?
Probably have to be reshot again, I mean, just in case.
There's portions that are in the flood plain, and as it's, when it's annexed in, it's going to be required to follow Title 25.
Yeah, actually, if you could come to the podium, or I believe the tables are marked as well, so which-
Actually, this particular site is a good example of what, when the committee did the zoning for flood, and did the study on how that would impact. This site was looked at very closely of what the effects would be if this site were to be developed. And it is large enough that it has areas to use for putting in, borrowing dry wells and that, and raise a patch. So it's big enough that it can easily handle any development that would occur with that and not affect the flood ordinance that's been developed this time.
He's referring to that compensatory fill.
Oh, okay.
Where we cut, borrow, and add, and-
It all has to be done within the same site, is that how that works?
Well, the ordinance, I also said you could use budding sites to borrow, as long as within the area.
Okay.
I assume that's what was finally passed, that was the recommendation by the group. But we don't need to do that on that one.
My only question is whether or not you were requesting a certain designation.
I'm sorry?
On behalf of your clients, whether you were requesting a certain zone designation on behalf of the client.
We talked about the M because it gives us a lot of flexibility, whether it would be retail, an industrial park, or a research park. It gives a lot of variation and variability with that, so that's, we feel that's the best.
Yeah, Hemske, the owners are asking for an M1, M Industrial designation.
Yeah, I do understand, like, with Ohio University, the HDL Center, which is rented out, I think they're starting now in their strategic plan to looking at using that solely for the university, so there is gonna be a need for more office space.
It was in the paper today, they gave them a six months notice to-
Exactly.
...
Yeah, I mean, I very much would want to see more office area.
So, other questions, I guess?
I'm thinking of one, but this is probably not the appropriate time to ask the questions, I guess it's, would you be handling the developing on the project, or?
The extent of our contract is to get it through this phase. Our offices would hope to be involved with the development, because we need to look for work next year.
Yeah, I guess my only concern is the project at, like, Applebee's, CVS, where everything really is jammed together in there, as far as, seems like you've certainly maximized that piece of property. Would the same thing be happening here, where it's difficult to drive?
No, that site, I mean, the Applebee's and how they end, the price tag on that site for a five acre site was $2.3 million plus the development cost, and this is a 15 acre, well, 12 acre plus what was abut, and it came in at the same price. So it's, they're two totally different sites. Traffic count on CBS site is probably three times what they would find there, so that's why it was such a prime location for that kind of a development then, on it. And that's why it's so dense, because what county required for the price on it, it was a little bit, in our opinion, overpriced, but we found enough people interested in developing on it.
And then also the Sun and Fun Spa, the pool place down in Richland, seems to, yeah, that's something that we approved, obviously, but it's also something that I think that some of the members were a little concerned about when they voted, as far as the density of-
A great part about zoning is, and zoning requirements and regulations, you can look at those things, and take a look at sites such as that, and see if they can be optimized, reducing the carbon footprint within the city of Athens, and I think the Athens Sun Fund, yeah, it's a site that maximizes its use, although the reality is, half that site is wooded area, unusable space, and so you end up using the area in front of that to be able to get what was going. And again, to justify spending the money that was required to build that building, you have to maximize it. I mean, that's just a matter of economics, to make it work and be profitable for the individuals developing it then. So, yeah, and it's, although it's, I've had a lot of positive things said about that site also, because looking at what was there before, which was the old building, which had been reused for multiple uses over the last 40 years, it's greatly improved that site, it's taken care of issues with the parking, and backing out onto Richland Avenue, which has always been an issue all along Richland Avenue. So, yeah, it's a compact site, the building does have a dominant element on Richland Avenue there, but, you know, it has its pluses and minuses. Yeah, I would have loved to have another quarter of an acre for that particular development, but it wasn't there.
Mayor?
I believe that all the services and the annexation, fire, sewer, water, and police have been, are part of the mix, I believe that was put by council.
They're deemed available.
Available, okay.
There's some that we hope will be better utilized in how we approach sewer at that site than what is options. One, there's several options for sewer, and our hopes is that we can develop a sewer line at the back of the site that would handle the Renzelli site, our site, and feed to the lift station behind, state on state there, so, which would make it easier for the city. But there's some, of course, there's some issues of easements that we have to be addressed with the budding property owner to do that.
Okay.
So we have looked at the preliminaries on that then.
And I think there was discussion of access to East State, an access road, and trying to whittle down how many entrances would be there, or limiting-
Mr. Stone had recommended that we look at, in the future planning of that, to see if a light could be developed directly across from the housing, across the street from it, reducing those accesses, and that would become the primary access to enter. This site is probably, as well as state on state also, in eliminating all those different accesses. So that's, that's some of the stuff that will be probably involved with, or someone will be involved with coming back to this organization, as well as the city, on how best to utilize that. But Mr. Stone was very excited about potential of developing that. There's a lot of positives with that, it'll reduce that, it's becoming a very fast area by having a light there, the vehicles traveling down there will be naturally reduced because there'll be a light.
I think it's 35 there.
Yeah.
In theory.
And there, yeah, I think most of the bikes are beating that speed right now on the bike path.
Probably so.
Well, the good news is, any development will come back to us, whether it be in a form of a planned unit development.
Yeah, anything, anything on those sites are gonna be greater than 5,000 square feet, so it'll be coming back to you guys again.
Are you any other comments, Nancy?
This is all new to me, the re-zoning.
Is it new to you?
Yeah, I've never done this before. Yeah, the site plan review is what, that review is taking place, is that what you're thinking? No matter what?
Yeah, that will take place no matter what, based on the size of the site.
Because I'm a little queasy about multiple entrances there.
I think we all are.
And RJ's comments were well taken as well.
I think that discussion occurred with the Renzelli problem.
Then I wasn't here, but I do know what, I do know what he's saying.
So you need a motion to propose M-zone for this taxation?
Yeah, there would be, there's no further discussion, someone could put forward a motion to recommend to city council that this zone be designated M1 if the city council were to pursue annexation. You're recommending an annexation, I guess we can, but it's not-
I'll also move.
Oh, is that?
I'll also move.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of a M1 designation for this parcel, if it were to be annexed by city council, say "I."
Aye.
Thank you.
Any oppositions?
Do we have something as an M1, or you're using the term M slash I?
For some reason, M and I are both used in our-
It's designated as industrial.
Right, okay.
It uses the letter M. John, would John explain to me, if I'm not mistaken, is that the letter "I," you don't want to use that necessarily for maps and things, just as a single "I" because it's easy to change. Somebody, if somebody wanted to, they could just make an "I" into a "J," or into a different letter of the alphabet relatively easy, and so the classification as M Industrial, when you see M and you assume it says, means manufacturing, but more or less it does.
I think they do that with brands too, on cattle rustlers, so, you know, they have to do that.
Yeah, you don't use "I," unless you're changing, who knows what.
Just so long as it's clear that we're not selling.
It's greater than five acres, so I think you could actually have that on this site, so.
What?
I think you could have a cattle ranch on this site, since you're having five acres.
Oh, yeah, a couple chicken coops.
Yeah, you guys chicken. And goats. Any other comments or discussion, or questions about procedure or anything? Okay. There are no other cases I'm aware of, so communications, we have none listed on the agenda, but I believe someone has provided us the current copy of the Title 23, correct? Or at least not the full 23, the definition.
It's the-
And permitted uses.
I put this together based on a request from the last Planning Commission meeting. It's 2304, which is all the permitted uses in our different zones, rather than flipping back and forth to numerous pages of our zoning code, I just put them all as footnotes on their respective pages.
Oh, I see, okay.
My recommendation to the commissioners would be, before, before we really take a dive into making recommendations for changes to B zones or any other zone, it's, my recommendation would be that perhaps this body, along with John and I at the next few meetings, slowly work through what our, the existing 2304 actually says, and what it means based on the definitions that are in our book, and the implications of what those mean before we start recommending language changes to council. I think, as I read through 2304, I'm actually, I find myself surprised at some of the things that it says and what those definitions mean versus what I would think it means if, without looking at definitions. And so, I think maybe, since it's the beginning of a new year, it might just behoove us to really make sure that we grasp 2304 as a whole, and then start moving forward with recommendations for changes based on what we'd like to see for future development in the city, but that's just my recommendation.
Question. I noticed that in your footnotes, you cite Title 23 and 99. Most of the time, they are congruent, and there's no difference?
Right, that's, well, I realized that after a while, Mayor. And so, for the first few pages, you see that I reference which section, and then after that, I just stopped, because they were, they were for the most part congruent. There were a few that showed up in 23, but did not show up in 99, there's a few that showed up in 99, but not in 23. There's a lot of words that we don't provide definitions for, but at the preamble to the definition section, it says that an American English dictionary or the approved and applicable building code will be used as guidance, if we're unsure of what a word means, but some of these, you know, if you read the word, and what it's defined as, then the rest, there's entire sections of 2304 that really don't make any sense afterwards.
I always look at that, Elia Mosary Institute's on page six.
Elia Mosary?
How do you pronounce that?
You are close enough.
Elia Missinery, I believe.
Elia Missinery.
I think it's L.
Right there.
Means-
That'd be, that'd be a killer on a spelling bee, right?
Yeah, I'm-
I think they need to change it to something-
It's a charitable organization.
To pronounce it during-
On the condition they visit and-
Giving alms or charity, it's a charitable organization.
Yep, so that would be easier to change than you think. I thank you for doing this, I was the one that requested it because I was getting totally confused.
I have no idea why.
Eating and drinking establishments and all the rest, and I was thinking, maybe they're hierarchical, hierarchical. The other thing that is kind of scary as well, is the initial chapters that lay out the fundamental framework of the code, also contain things that bear on this, that are not necessarily included, and that's where, I mean, I can't think of one right offhand any more than I can say Elia Mosinary, but.
You're talking about the intent and the purpose?
Yes, and, you know, not severability, but things that come after that. But, so we have to read the whole thing?
Yeah, it's only 20 pages.
I know, but it's grim.
Our sign section's longer than this, so.
Oh, forget it.
Be happy we're not-
The sign section is fine, isn't it?
It's fine as it's gonna get.
How do you recommend then we proceed with, I guess, what's the next steps? If we're, if we're gonna look at maybe making modifications to the business zone, do you recommend we just sort of make sure what, we have a complete understanding of what's there first, and then kind of-
Right. I think that's probably the best way to start, and then maybe look at our plan, and maybe just have a more detailed discussion about how we really see the city growing, and how we see, you know, as buildings become older and they need to be replaced, how we actually want to see replacement happen. I think RJ, your comments about the Sun and Fun, is, something like that might be a good place to start, I mean, that's entirely permitted by city code. And then, you know, so our code says, knock yourself out, go right ahead and do that, and then it's done, and we realize, oh, we don't, we actually don't like that finished product. So how can we, how can the code be molded, not on a case by case basis, like parcel to parcel, but, you know, as a corridor to corridor, so that the finished product is cohesive, and that it looks like something that we want to see down the road? And that's, that's a real challenge, I think, but our current code, you know, if we don't do anything with our code, projects like the Fun and Sun are what you're, are what we're permitting, and that's what we're going to see everywhere in those types of zones, so.
But a question about that, and it's just, it's really peripheral to it, and yet, when he was talking about the trees, you know, being a waste of space, and I was thinking, all those trees roots are important, because they're holding that hill up, but would we have allowed them to excavate back to the end of their property line within our code? I mean, wouldn't the land development ordinance have flipped in and stopped it?
Yeah.
Well, depends who's enforcing it, of course, I mean, you can go back and see numerous examples of that, but, okay, because I, it was, the limitations were imposed by nature, and you can somewhat see what he was saying, I don't know that I have a strong opinion either way, because I don't drive there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a strong opinion on that, that site myself, and I have heard, you know, anecdotally, people told me that they don't like it.
Is that because parking?
Anecdotally, other people said that they, what a great improvement to the south side, so.
Well, I mean, he does bring up the valid point, though, that, you know, in today's economy, you know, in order to do something like that, unfortunately, you have to add on things that you may not want to, that don't necessarily fit into the community, and I think that's something that has to be weighed in there as well, it's just that, you know, what it will cost to replace buildings entirely, and, you know, what developers are going to need to do in order to make their nut back on it.
Right.
So, so what you're talking about is how to put some kind of guidance into that, or are we talking about aesthetics, or?
I don't know, I'm not getting into that discussion specifically, Mayor.
I don't think aesthetics-
My first thoughts as I, as I started going through this exercise with the definitions was that, it was eye-opening to me, actually, I, you know, we always look at, we look at the zoning code bits and pieces, I think, as, as applications come in, as somebody calls us and says, can I do this at this location, you know, this is what I'd like to do, and so we start looking at the zoning code and saying, yeah, you can do that, or no, you can't, and you need to get a variance, et cetera. And when I started looking through this, you know, there's just a lot of things I started scratching my head over, is saying, why, why is this in there? Why do we spend so much time talking about trailer parks? And then if you look at the definition of trailer, it has nothing to do with trailer parks.
It's because of the-
It just doesn't make any sense as to why we have those things in our code. But then the other issue, I think, I always fall back on, is I don't hear anybody ever saying that they're satisfied with our code. I don't, I rarely hear people say that they're satisfied with finished products that are constructed in our community. Maybe I'm just not listening to the right people at all times either, but if we want different products, and we want different construction patterns, and we want different development patterns, we have to, we have to look into 2304, and look at those uses, and look at those setbacks, and look at all those requirements, and then we need to figure out, what do we actually want to see?
Could I propose that, since you seem to have some choke points that you think are important, and you and John have worked those out, that we start with 23.04.01, and just read through it?
That's what I was suggesting too.
I mean, and so, and maybe, you know, I hate, it's probably because my brain has aged, but I hate kind of thinking about things I should have said after a half hour later. So if you could kind of shoot us something that you think are topics via Shar, maybe informally, but just say, I'm really gonna zero in on this and this and this, so we'd know it.
Okay.
So I could go and look at it.
Okay.
Because I just sometimes think, you know, it's like, oh yeah, I should have thought of that.
Mayor?
Well, just, this is probably an electronic document that you've put annotations in here with footnotes.
Yes.
If possible, you could send it, and I would actually suggest actually going through, well, it's online, but not with the footnotes and annotations in one place.
I can put it online, and I can email it to, of course, the-
Yeah, and let's just do it in pieces, you know, so I don't want to look forward to doing from 1 to 11 in one day, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm not-
If we do 1 to 3, or 1 to, yeah, 1 to 3 in one day, we'd be doing a lot.
Are you talking about pages, or sections?
No, .01, .02, .03.
I mean, I guess, yeah, we could put on the agenda next week, we'll do residential, and see how that goes.
Two weeks.
Or two weeks, I'm sorry, the next meeting.
Yeah.
And just try to get through residential one, see if that we can effectively-
I would say start with our one-for-one meeting, and see.
Okay.
Okay, so our reading assignment, taking words from a teacher here, would be to go to page five. So pages 1 to 5, we want to report on?
Yeah. I'd write a book review. I would like, but I would like him, you know, he's zeroed in on trailer parks, or trailer whatevers, and, you know, and that's really something that's kind of from the past. Maybe we need to just look at the development, the proposal that the ODC, whatever, Ohio Department of Development did in the past, and see what they did with trailers, and kind of eliminate some of it. Some of the words, I mean, I know, we've only added words, I haven't seen very many times we've taken them out.
Oh, I think we did when Ed Baum was doing this.
You think he took out some words?
No, he took out some words, yes.
Yeah, there's some big chunks, I think, back then, that were-
I thought signs just grew.
Now, signs, he did signs after the fact, but the first, the first go-around was the code. What was that, Dale Burchard did that review many years ago?
Okay.
Then that followed with Ed Baum doing a review of it.
A surgical procedure on it?
And again, I suspect a lot of it has to do with the history of why we're trying to adjust, deal with problems, and we added pieces to it. And when people complain about it, I suspect it's because they run against it, they run up to, against the wall, and therefore, you know, if there's no problem, the horizon's clear all the way out, and there's not, we don't look at this, but as soon as you have saying, well, I think you can't do that, then it becomes a problem for somebody. I guess, my question is, I look at the Sun and Fun, and I look at the size of it, and I don't, I don't see it as bad, I don't see it as good, I know it's probably, we didn't visualize it when we were putting it together, so, but how to say, we're gonna tailor that to make it, the next one come along, look good, or look different, I mean-
I mean, I think the issue most, that it sounds like I'm hearing, it has to do with setbacks in building heights, so I think when we review this, we should also look at the bolt controls that are affiliated with each one.
And whether, the parking behind it may be the problem, because it's new in this town, isn't the parking behind it in Sun and Fun?
It's on the side.
It sticks out like a sore thumb.
Yeah.
And I can recognize it does, I mean, you can see it from the highway, you know, it's different colored, so it's also, you know-
Yeah, but the issue is, we can't-
Right, I got aesthetics, but I-
I tried that on the Lancaster project, and it didn't go so well.
So, could also, as you're talking about-
You can control aesthetics, you can't control it as our code's written today. That's the, that's the basic fact of that, that there's communities all over the state of Ohio that have regulations on aesthetics for specific zones, specific districts, based on, on how they matter to the public realm, et cetera. But we can't, we have no control over aesthetics based on our current code.
Right, that's what I-
Except for historic preservation.
Well, and I would, you go to Dublin, everything's brick, you know, they have the little bricks, the signs are down low, I mean, you know, it's, it's nice. little bricks, the signs are down low, I mean, you know, it's, it's nice.
So maybe that can be the second assignment. All right, so I have one more request than Paul and John. I'd like to see how R1 works in the R1 zones that we have. You know, I'd like some lot sizes to show because I think that's another part of the problem.
You were talking about conformity of lot sizes?
Right, because it says in the code, you can build on any lot you have, right?
Mm-hmm.
But in the front part, and it says you're not supposed to cut a lot in two and make two non-conforming lots, but that's difficult, especially when somebody wants to do it. So, you know, so just a couple of examples, like one from Paul's neighborhood over on the west side, because those lots are already non-conforming and remember we set the, we had a big trouble on council a year ago just reducing the setback to 30 feet, even though we knew we had to do it because of the lots. And we had lots of people, especially on the east side, who were really mad about it. I mean, mine are mad compared to usual, but... I don't know, so I'd like to see, like in my neighborhood, well, my neighborhood's too, how about Briarwood, you know, or Brocksbury area, just, you know, I think almost everything we have as an R1 zone is non-conforming.
Well, does it conform to each other, it has to conform to its neighboring R1 property, correct?
Well, if that's the case, I mean, what's the point?
Our current lot size is required about 66 by 120, something like that, and what the bulk controls, and most of the lots in town are in the 50 to 55 foot by 105 foot deep range, so just about every lot in town, I'd say 90% are probably non-conforming, sitting in R1 lot.
What is it, 8,000 square feet for a lot and most of them are like 5,000 plus, minus some?
So it was based on, again, what they, you know, future going more suburban than what was actually there?
It's almost pre-subdivision regulations in its approach, I think.
Well, it sounds like it's post, because it wanted bigger lots.
No, I meant, but in the sense of you would have both of them working simultaneously in the same venue.
Historically, you start looking at where things are and how they've grown out. I mean, in my, you know, you have actual half lots like on Grosvenor and some places, even on the near east side, I was looking at some sites on Ohio and Wallace there and you've got a series of half lots that have been combined, they actually make one, there's a house straddling all those. But the original subdivisions, these were built piece by piece as they went out. You look at between Oakmont Phase 1 and 2 and 3, you know, there's, some have sidewalks, some don't, some have different layouts as a result. You know, this is why we have streets that don't line up on the near east side between like Wallace and, I mean, Shannon and May, et cetera, you know, just because they were built in at the time. Same thing with East State Street, the far east side.
And then to that...
You don't have clear intersections as a result.
Yeah.
You know, we can't go back and change it in that sense, but do we make it so it's the present things fit or do we slice it even finer, saying, okay, new development versus old development? The R1 south side versus R1 north side?
We have it generally in there, I think, with the proviso that they can build on any lot that's platted.
Well, we just, yeah.
And I've already told you, the real estate agents are taking advantage of that all up and down the streets that are planted with single lots with two houses on them.
The Conference Plan talked about infill quite a bit, if you remember.
I think infill is a word that I've heard abused more than I've heard used properly myself.
Probably so. Again, it comes down to the finances that drive that, though. I mean, somebody says, I've got a lot that can't be developed. I mean, I'm looking at, you know, some of the lots that are being built right now, the, what is it, West Hills Slaughter one, that's, I wouldn't think that was ever something somebody would build on a hillside like that, but...
The rule says they can do it.
They can do it and I think that First Street is, has the same topography for the most part, you know, the uphill sides on the same slope and the sound hillsides on, you know, you've got a three-story, you know, you've got a basement all the way two stories down there because of the slope, so...
Sounds like my neighborhood. Yeah, so, and I'm not opposed, I think we should keep that part in. Every lot is buildable in a sense, but... Because there are places, I mean, if people, it's what RJ might say about the assumptions about a place with respect. When you buy it and it has two lots attached to it, you assume that you could sell those in the future, perhaps.
Well, we've had a few lot splits come in front of us that might, or might not work. You know, we had, we had the, we have, right now the ones pending, they say the PUD or the Madison Avenue one, whatever you want to call it, Madison Square or whatever, and you've got then, at the same time, we were dealing with the one on Mulligan last year. The same session, you know, one was talking about seven, seven different, you know, houses, one going from PUD to a fee simple layout, the other one's trying to split it to three. Is it, that lot that's being split up there without frontage on Mulligan was, you know, obviously it didn't pass the muster from our point of view. We'd never got any pass up because of what we're hearing. On the other hand, you look at the Madison and East State layout there, is that, you know, and that's it, there's different animals there. One is at 21 and in, close in-city residential area versus what's on Mulligan, which is kind of more spread out in the Oakmont fashion.
Right.
And again, I don't know what kind of laws will get that set up where we want it to go, you know, the finished product being, you know, whether it's a Fun 'n Sun or a laundromat which doesn't function anymore or something of that nature, you know?
It's complex, isn't it?
Yep. So that's why we're going to do pages 1 to 5.
Yeah.
Our assignment, homework assignment.
I would love to get rid of the word millinery.
Which one?
Millinery.
Millinery?
I don't know if it's even still in here, I just remember fighting. Remember we spent a whole year on that thing with Ed, the zoning revision, remember?
Can I make cats?
Oh, yeah.
Not the, not the...
Is it out?
Millinery.
Yeah, and the other one is, the other one is servants quarters.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was another one I didn't really get rid of.
I think it's still in there.
It is.
It is.
We've got a lot of people who get, you know...
They're permitted accessory use, some are home access.
Can't always something other than servants quarters?
Yeah.
Jeez.
In-law suites now.
All right, so we're going to look at R1 at the next meeting. We're going to not only look at the permitted use 2304.1 and the affiliated or associated definitions, we're also going to look at bulk controls and we would also like to see, you know, 3 to 4 unique, or not necessarily unique, but...
Exemplary.
Exemplary, for the lots in each of the different sort of areas of town. I mean, I think what we'll find is that R1 is not a one-size-fits-all and there may, it may have to be broken up into many more R numbers.
Or else we can just leave it and go with what we have. So what I suggest, Paul, is maybe, this is just an idea, I've seen you use the county GIS to great, with great success. Could you give us an example of one that conforms and one that doesn't conform in some of those neighborhoods?
Yeah, I'm sure we can.
So we can actually kind of get a handle on it? And also we'll add, one thing that you both have said to me separately is the lot coverage thing also would come into it and...
Well, we're at what, 60% total, 30% impermeable?
Correct.
No, a house, 60% impermeable.
Not that I want to change it.
Right.
Especially with the regulations, but...
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't want to get too hung up on the non-conforming ones if, you know, because there's going to be so many variations of non-conforming in each one. I'd rather, I mean, I think we should focus on what each neighborhood is standing.
Well, R1 is the thing you're protecting, it's the center of it all. I mean, that's where it starts. It's supposed to be the most protected.
It's where it gets tricky too. If it's an existing platted lot, our code says that it's not a non-conforming lot.
Right.
So, and that is a good part of our lots and that is where a lot of times we have some of the more trickier issues with setbacks, because then you're allowed to use 10% of the lot width. And so I think it is something that we do look at on some of those non-conforming lots.
If you haven't looked at it, and I know John has looked at it a lot more than I have, but I still think there's a lot of information there about R1 and how it works or doesn't, even though we usually don't see it at this level. We only see, we only see the big picture, the Sun 'n Fun, Columbia Gas site, all the rest. But I think you, you'll hear about it if you're on council or if you're in the neighborhoods.
Okay, any comments?
Hope we didn't give you too much, Paul.
Just go for 4 weeks then.
We'll get it done, we'll start.
Since the mayor isn't bothering him anymore, right? He's blocked down the hall and stuff.
The only request he'll have.
Well, now he's bothering you too.
This is all we're here to do. That's all there is to it.
Thanks, thanks for putting this together, though.
Sure.
Yeah, he'll be saving us his wages.
All right, we'll get, let's get R1 out of the way at the next meeting and then R2 at the meeting following if everything goes according to plan and sort of proceed. It's going to take us some time if we do it in this fashion and that also means, are we just, is everyone, we talked at length about making changes to the business zone and, I mean, that means they're going to stand for most of the year.
Well, that'll be, the business stuff, if they integrate it in then and replace it, we'll be able to see it as it fits in the total fabric and that'll be good.
Wouldn't that be our next assignment? So if we have, if we get page 5, if we've done our homework and don't get a D, we don't want to...
We have to finish R2 and R3.
Well, you can get a D, you just have to get it right at the end.
Oh, yeah, I see, 6, 7.
We only meet twice a month.
Oh, come on.
So sometime in February we'll do the zone.
R2 is only 2 pages.
It says everything above.
Well, we know everything about by the time we get there, don't we?
Right.
Yeah.
One-size-fits-all, everything above, there you go.
All right, well, we'll see how this goes and reassess afterwards, see what we may have to do.
Are you dubious?
All right, there's no other communications. Do we have any reports from city planner or director of development and code enforcement?
I do not.
Mr. Baske?
All I wanted to do was announce next Tuesday evening the BZA agenda. We have 3 cases. First one is at 55 Hospital Drive, they are requesting a variance. Basically what they did is they submitted for, to replace all their signage and all of their directional signs on site are not in compliance with the revised sign ordinance, so they're having to go to the BZA to get a variance for all of their signage to be changed out to leave it the same size as it is. So, and they're changing the faces on all of them, a total of 14 signs that they have that are not in compliance today. So, that's the first case. Second case is 363 Richland Avenue, also known as Coots at Summit, or Summit, what it?
Summit at Coats Run.
Let's see, Summit at Coats Run. They had a number of parking spaces slipped over the side of the hill on the backside